Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education Policy Workshop. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening.
Good evening to all the board members.
Good evening.
And we'll start out with number two, contracts for board approval, Dr. Gilbert.
Yes, the first contract is for an approval of a contract between Franklin Covey, which is the leader in me, and Murfreesboro City Schools. And at this time, I'd like to call Robin Newell to the podium, please, to talk just a little bit about what this will involve. I think it's an exciting time for Mitchell Nielsen, and this contract is about that.
Yes, we have, I have come to you before and talked about the leadership focus that Mitchell Nielsen Schools is going to take next year. We are very excited about that. We've done lots of research on how best to implement that at Mitchell Nielsen. And Dr. Gilbert and Mr. Anderson and Lisa Trail and my fabulous assistant principals went to visit a school in Bowling Green. I think that I talked to y'all after we had visited that school. And we came back really fired up about what that could mean for our students at Mitchell Nielsen. And then to get buy-in from the teachers, I wanted them to see what was going on. And so I took a sampling of my teachers from both sides of the street to a school in Clarksville that much more matches our clientele, our socioeconomic rate, our number of students we have. They matched us much better. And I have to tell you, and these teachers are here with me if you have any questions for them, came back so fired up about what this will mean for the students at Mitchell Nielsen. It's not an additional thing that we'll be doing, but a way of doing what we're already doing better. And I've made some notes here, so I wouldn't forget to tell you anything. We really think that schools that employ this leader in me philosophies teach skills for making good choices, for getting along with others, and for managing time wisely. And I know that businesses have heard of leader in me, or the seven habits of Stephen Covey, and I'm sure many of you have heard of that as well. I know some of our teachers that have been in the business world, their corporations actually sent them to training. My husband, in his corporation, they have sent him for training. It is such an important philosophy that businesses want their employees to have, that they pay thousands and thousands of dollars for this training. And think about how empowered our students will be if they get this training day in and day out, from the time they are in kindergarten until they leave us in the sixth grade. It helps them take responsibility for their lives, ownership for their learning, to work with others more effectively, and to do the right thing when no one is watching, rather than waiting for them to learn those as they are adults. Business communities talk to us all the time about wanting to, what kind of workforce that they need. And I think we do a fabulous job of preparing children academically, but I think what the business world needs goes well beyond the ability to read, write, and use a calculator. I think what they want can be captured in two words, and that's character and competence. And the leader in me program will help them do that. You know, we focus on the whole child in Murfreesboro City Schools, and I think that that complements what we're already doing there. And I have one quote that I want to share with you from the book, The Leader in Me, and our entire faculty is doing a book study on that book as we speak. It says, "Leadership is communicating people's worth and potential so clearly that they are inspired to see it in themselves." And I think that also is the essence of good teaching. And we're excited about what that can mean for our students, for our faculty, for our community. I've already talked to some people in the community, and they are excited about what this can do for our students, not only in the future, but to help them today. And I'm happy to answer any questions, or if you want to talk to the teachers who will be in the trenches living this, then I'm happy to drag them up here.
Mr. Campbell.
I don't know where I saw this, but somewhere in this, the information that we have, it listed like calendar and training of teachers and that sort of thing?
Yes, sir.
And if I wrote down, right, you've got three days in July, 21st, 22nd, and 23rd, that your teachers will go, will come to school for training?
Sure.
Correct? Okay. Then in September, you've got a half a day on a Thursday, and then November, the 5th, I think you've got eight people that will be going somewhere for training.
Well, they'll, they'll come to us for training.
Okay, but they'll, they'll, are those, would be eight teachers that will be involved in the training?
Yes, that will be what we call our lighthouse team, and that's like the leadership team, that, that they want those teachers to have even more knowledge so that they are the ones that walk with the teachers through, you know, just that embedded professional development. And, and why we want to do that is because if we're going to do it, we want to do it right, and we want the people that are professionals at doing this to bring that to our school. We don't want to do it halfway. Our kids deserve better than that.
All right, then you've got two days in November, the 6th and 7th, a Thursday and a Friday, I think?
Yes, sir, and that's that leadership training.
Okay. Now, here's my, my major question at this point in time, just so that we all understand where we are. Where do these days come from? Are these those professional days, those TDL days? I want to make sure we-
Well, it would depend on whether or not it was their first day they took off. Their first day that they take for professional development is a professional development day, and then after that, it's TDL.
Okay, so is-
The other thing that you have this year is you have 12 hours of staff development that teachers will be earning on their own, and those days in the summer would certainly count for that.
Okay, but then those days during the school year?
The days during the school year are primarily the half-days. The leadership team days would not be though, and those would be either professional or TDL.
And the half-day of training is a half-day that we have in our schedule anyway, and then we will do, so it's not-
Yeah, they're there anyway that day.
Right.
Okay, but like-
We're just going to stay later.
Like November the 5th, when you've got those, those eight that I, is your leadership team, okay? So that will be their, that teacher's professional day, that first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then if, if they are out for November the 6th or 7th, will that be a TDL day?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So then they still will have another professional and/or personal day, plus their personal day?
Absolutely.
Right?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then some travel expenses?
For the coaches, and that's all included in the-
That's all included in the-
No travel for our teachers, they come to us.
And the one thing about this is that it goes along well with the Title II funds and the title funds that Ms. Newell has this year. And with title, that is, title money is supposed to be designed by the school, and this is the way that she is choosing to use those funds.
Sure. And it's money I already have.
Okay, okay. So it's already all paid for, money's allotted and all that sort of thing, so we're, because you're using the title funds, and I understand that too.
If you approve it, I have it.
Oh, I'm sure you do. I'm not questioning that. And it's a good use of the title funds.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Phillips, Mrs. Smith, Dr. Brown, you have, Dr. Brown and then Jared.
Ms. Newell, I know this is going to be so exciting, such an exciting new way to approach education at Mitchell Nielsen. My question, though, was for Dr. Gilbert. You said something that I didn't understand, so please help me understand. You said that there will be 12 days of staff development on their own this summer?
12 hours.
12 hours?
Of professional development.
Okay.
Yeah, you remember, did I say days? That's lack of sleep, I'm sorry. No, 12 hours. You remember in the calendar typically we had, I think this year we had six. We went ahead and put more in because what I heard from teachers is that this year we're hoping to offer more of choice after school during, during the summer, and so that would allow for that. And we typically have had 12, we did not this past year, but we have 12 next year.
Okay.
And I believe that's correct.
Are those paid days?
Yes.
Okay, they're paid.
If you remember for years, in fact, every year we have so many hours that teachers earn on their own, so that's what this is.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I appreciate, of course, since we're starting kind of a new school within the school, I like that you are using funds that we already have. We already, we were going to have to spend some new money to create this school, so I appreciate that this is where you're talking about, the funds coming from. Now, we did talk independently, and, and you were talking about some, using some of your own resources for some, some of the extras, and I hate that. But I know teachers and principals do that all the time, but I, I, I hope that you will reuse the resources that schools have to offer as much as you can.
I absolutely do, and I believe very strongly in this, and the teachers that are with me especially do, because they've seen it in action. We shared our visit, this is the fir-, today, this morning was the first faculty meeting that I've had since we went to Clarksville, and we shared our trip with the other teachers today. And we've gotten numerous emails and people stopping these teachers in the hall and thanking them for sharing that with them. It's, you know, I wish I could take them all to see what it looks like so that they could be excited, but, you know, the, these teachers are great cheerleaders for this program and our school, and I think that excitement has spread throughout our school today.
Well, and I love that, and I've asked Ms. Wade if we have time, I would, I would love to hear a brief comment from the teachers. But, and I also like the enthusiasm from your current student population-
Yes.
-that you reported, how many students are choosing to go through the leadership program as a choice when they have different zoning options.
That's right, that's right. We're proud of that.
And I think that's very exciting and says a lot about you and your faculty.
I have the best faculty in the world.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Brown?
Three questions, one comment. First question is, in this type of engagement, the consultant often makes or breaks the success of what you're trying to do? And we list the consultant as April Williams. How much time have you spent with her? Do you feel comfortable with her? Are you sure that she's the right fit for Murfreesboro City and Mitchell Nielsen?
I have not talked to her, but I have talked to Chad Smith, that's with Franklin Covey, and he has chosen her especially for us. She is from Knoxville, I believe, so she won't have as much travel time and is, you know, familiar with schools in Tennessee and knows more about us than someone coming from further away. So I feel quite confident that that match will be-
I would just encourage you to spend some time with that individual-
Absolutely.
-and be sure that she's the right consultant for your situation.
Sure. And, you know, I, I think that the Franklin Covey people are very cognizant of that as well, and, and they have expressed to me over and over, and almost to the fact that I've said, okay, I got it, quit telling me, that they will do this at our pace. They are not on a set schedule. If we want to go faster, if we need to go slower, they're going to tailor this to meet the needs of Mitchell Nielsen.
Sounds good. Second question, this is a one-year contract. Are the expenses in the second through infinity years approximately the same?
No, oh, no, 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 no. They drop off drastically.
Do we have any idea?
After that year, after the first year, you're primarily paying for the intellectual property.
And it's $3,000.
But as we have turnover of faculty, will we do in-house training, or we still need to have a consultant?
I believe that's what the leadership team, the lighthouse team, the leaders will do.
All right. And then the third question would be to Ms. Baker. The legalese that's in this contract, you've reviewed, and you're content with that?
Yes, yes, I have. I've reviewed it, and I've approved it as of the-
Okay, very good. The comment is, I would just like to thank Robin and the staff at Mitchell Nielsen. It's very difficult to step out and try something new. The easiest thing to do is just to continue what you've always done.
Sure.
And this is going to be a challenge. It's going to take you out of your comfort box, but I really think that you will do an outstanding job, and I'm very excited for the students of Mitchell Nielsen, and hopefully, eventually, all the students in Murfreesboro City Schools to benefit from this. So, thank you.
Thank you, we're excited.
I need to announce too, as you know, and for our listening audience, that obviously this is also in partnership with MTSU, with the College of Behavioral Health Sciences, to develop a center for collaborative leadership and learning there, and they are very aware of what we are doing. In fact, I will be talking with them on Saturday, and we'll actually be presenting to that college later this month. So they are very much on board, as you heard a few months ago. We're excited about that.
As a matter of fact, we sent a team of students and two teachers to MTSU today to visit that college. They had their leadership award ceremony, and they invited our students to get to see that, and so they also went to the aerospace and got to do the airport simulation stuff. And I tweeted it, so if you want to look at a picture of that. And then they went to that leadership award ceremony, so that was very nice of MTSU to invite us. Our transportation department did not charge us for that field trip to take that bus over there, so a shout-out to them, and they had a ball. So we, we appreciate that very much.
Mr. Barrett, and then Mr. Campbell, and Mrs. Phillips.
Dr. Brown answered my question about the cost, but I can't wait for, to see how this plans out, plays out. I can't wait to see, and I'm pretty excited about it, so thanks for bringing it to us.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Mr. Campbell.
Looks like a good program. I am assuming from what we're looking at that you'll have April, three days?
Yes, sir. Yeah, she'll be our coach, she'll come every time.
The 5th, 6th, and 7th, I'm assuming?
Yes, sir.
Those three days together?
And the, the days that we picked in July were, they're tentative based on your approval, but those were the dates that she was available.
Okay, okay. So then you'll have her those three days. It just shows on here consultant fees one day, and then it shows it for two days together, so that's the total three days. How does this involve into the curriculum?
Well, it's, it's embedded into the curriculum, because if you, are you familiar with the seven habits at all? I mean, do you know what they are?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll be glad to teach you. I'll make these, my gigglers back here come up.
Could you get $2,600 while you're doing the teaching?
Yes, yes, I will teach you, and they'll send me money. But the first three habits are how students take ownership of their own lives and their own learning. And so they help, give them, like, the first one is to be proactive, that they, they want to make sure that they know what they're doing, and that they, the, the second one, and y'all tell me if I'm saying my out of order, is put first things first. They want children to know, like, we had, the children in Clarksville told us-
Is that three? What's number three?
Oh, begin with the end in mind. Be proactive, begin with the end in mind, and put first things first. Those are the three things that help them keep up with their time and their education, and making sure they do their homework before they play Minecraft and that kind of stuff. So where that comes in with the curriculum is that they know that they have to do their homework before they go play. And then one of the other goals is to begin with the end in mind. So they have goals, they have personal goals and they have academic goals. And how they work together to come up with, if there's conflict, how they come up with not, your way is better or my way is better, but how can we compromise and come up with a way that's better than either of the ideas that we came up with? Also, that they synergize is one of them, and they, how important it is for them to work together as a team, and that they come up with ideas like that. And then the seventh habit is sharpen the saw, which means balance in their lives between work and play, that you have to take care of your body and your exercise and food, and that you have to, that's where our clubs and stuff will come in, that not only will we do academics, but we'll also give children a chance to be in different clubs and sports and that kind of thing.
Will all of your student body be involved, or is this only particular for certain grade levels?
No, we'll do it for all kindergarten through sixth grade.
Okay.
And it will look different at, at each grade level, but, but they, you know, we start teaching those habits to all of the students from day one, and so they'll, they'll, that will be embedded. What, what we talked about with the students in Clarksville, they gave us a panel of children, and the teachers stood back and just let us ask questions. So, unprepared, one of my teachers said they were up there without a net, and we asked them about the seven habits, and they talked about how they took that home and, and used that in their home. And, you know, one student talked about how he had to listen to what his mother was telling him so that he would understand, you know, the directions that he had been told. And a couple of our teachers have started implementing that already in their classrooms, and those parents are calling to say, I don't know what you have done, but it has changed my child's attitude about whatever. So I, I just think they're, they're principles that will help all of us, and I'm excited, and I think every child deserves this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mrs. Phillips, and then Mrs. Rainier.
I have several comments. I'd like to, it, first of all, it sounds like a very healthy and enriching curriculum to support what you all are already doing and have been doing for a long time. Parts of it reminds me of the old PIDEA method, especially the conflict resolution aspects of PIDEA. I am concerned, I have to say, it's expensive. This is an expensive program. And I see that they, we have in the budget here money for eight kits. Is that eight kits, I mean, do they, is it learning materials and something, what it says?
I'm not sure specifically what that line is.
The seven habits signature facilitator kit at $425.
That might be for that lighthouse team, but I'm not sure, since there's eight of those, is that right?
I think that's right.
Okay.
Those are going to be for your facilitators, I think, for your leadership, for your leadership team.
The leadership team? Okay, because later on then in the contracts, it talks about how we cannot copy or reproduce any of these materials that are in the kit, because we might, you know-
I think that's, I think that's pretty normal, though. I know, and I'll give you an example of that. We had several, all of our principals last year went to a training that was given by the Leadership and Learning Center. And we found that, we actually sent two of our central office staff to that center, they came back, they can use the intellectual property because they have been trained. I think you have the same situation here. I think this is just a matter of those kids are here, and because they are signature with the leader in me, then they are going to be able to disperse that with their other teachers.
Will, will they be able to do that, Ms. Baker? Disperse this material, or make any, I mean, can they make a, can they make a, run it through a copy machine, and?
I don't believe they, they can run it through a copy machine to use it in that manner, but they, they, it's, it's basically a train-the-trainer type of situation. There, there now are in-house trainers on this, those facilitators. And we'll be able to use it for years and years and years.
And years and years to come? Okay. So the kits remain with Mitchell Nielsen? Okay, good.
Let me take care of your-
That's my, my question.
Mrs. Rainier, and then Mrs. Smith.
I know, I know you said that this is embedded or will be embedded throughout the day, but in the initial stages, is this going to be something that's going to be a separate curriculum? Those of you who were around long ago, somebody's shaking their head, when we did like the, I think it was a colors program, and then the conflict resolution programs and all of these other things, that we took a portion of our day to strictly focus on those skills. Is that what this is going to be, or is it going to be embedded enough by teaching these seven skills or whatever in the beginning? I'm just wondering what, how much time will be taken away from the academic day?
I would imagine that we, after the training we do, those three days of training that we do, that we'll be much more equipped to answer this question.
Okay.
But at the beginning of the school, as you're aware, where there's lots of time that you have to spend on routines and procedures-
Routines.
-and, and all of that that has to be taking place, or the academics aren't going to come anyway.
Right.
And so we do morning meeting, and my thought is that those seven habits would be introduced, and I know that's how the teachers that have started implementing them now are implementing them. We do them during our announcements. We have things in the hall. When they go to PE for the first time, the PE teacher talks about what those seven habits look like in PE, and the media specialist talks about what they look like in-
In her environment.
The library. Couldn't think of what word I was saying. And, and it's, it's embedded everywhere. I took pictures in Clarksville of the teachers' boards where they had written up on the board what the students were going to do that day, and they were talking, I can't remember exactly what it was, but let's say they were going to compare fractions using a number line. Well, instead of writing, I can compare fractions using a number line, it would say, I can synergize, which means work together with my group, to compare fractions on a number line. Or, you know, I will put first things first by whatever. And, and so it's, it's just part of their academic vocabulary.
Right.
Just becomes more of that vocabulary, how they look-
And then-
-at what they're doing anyway.
Okay, that's, that's what it sounds like, like, it'll be a lot of kind of prep work at the beginning.
Sure, sure.
Routines, learning the vocabulary, and then it will just become a part of their day.
Yes, because that's what we'll do. And the schools that we went to, I, I think I told you all this the last time I talked, that I was concerned about how you would know it was a leadership school. You know, we're just going to slap leadership after the end of the name, how will you know? And when we walked into these schools, there was no doubt whatsoever that their focus was leadership. And also focus on academics as well, because the children are empowered to know where they stand academically. There was a little girl in Clarksville, her name was Sunshine. We wanted to kidnap her, she's the cutest little thing ever, she needs to be at Mitchell Nielsen. And she would show us kindergarten, five years old. This is my data notebook, and in August, I knew three of my sight words. In November, I knew 36 of my sight words, and in February, I knew 52. And then she read all 52 letters to me, words to me. They do student-led conferences with their parents. One of the teachers took a picture of a fourth grader's agenda for the student-led conference. The parent sits down, the teacher sits down, and the child opens up their data notebook, because they know, they're not comparing themselves to other students, but where they are with their academic goals. And the agenda said, introduce my family to my teacher, go over my peach sheet, which was their academic and beha-, not behavior, academic and personal goals, which might be behavior, but those goals, review my data notebook, answer questions. And so, you know, how empowering that is for children to know exactly where they are, exactly where they want to go. And then we, they had some students that didn't quite make their goal, but they weren't, they didn't give up, and they weren't sad about it, they were, you know, they adjusted their goal, and they knew what they had to do to be proactive to meet that goal.
And they have support from other students and teachers.
Yes.
So it's, it's really a way of living.
Yeah.
Is there a parent component to this?
Well, the, the, all of the schools that have implemented this have talked about what a huge increase in parent engagement, because they saw the benefits from that. And we will certainly, I got a fabulous idea from Ms. Smith when I talked to her the other day about our-
Fabulous.
Yes, fabulous. Our announcements, that, you know, we will talk about the seven habits and, and how that will be integrated in their school and in their lives. And she suggested that we tape those and send those out to the parents as well, so they could be updated on what we were doing, and they could learn, and then see perhaps their student doing announcements, which I thought was a great idea.
Great idea, thank you.
Ms. Smith, and then Mrs. Phillips.
Like I said, I think it's, I, I know we have startup costs on a new program. I mean, it's, it's a whole new initiative, so of, of course, we're going to have expensive. Broken down, honestly, some of these consultant fees are pricey, but we would have expenses no matter what. But what, one thing I wanted to make sure, I don't know that Ms. Newell told us in her first part of the conversation, one of these schools matches up socio-economically with Mitchell Nielsen.
Several do, yes.
And I think that's important for us to realize that in the, in the leadership program, because there is a school with a student body that's very similar.
Now, the one we went to see was very similar, and then I've talked to the principal of a school in Savannah, Tennessee. And he says they have, in their community, nine housing projects, and they pull eight into his school. And a couple of years ago, they rezoned his school, they reduced the number of students who went to that school from 400 down to 200. And so he's pulling from eight housing communities, and they reduced his, he said, nobody wanted to go to their school. And so, or not so, but in addition to that, they started the leader in me program, and his enrollment has grown to 450. They're a choice school as well, and they've had 250 people apply to go to their school. And there are parents from the higher socioeconomic schools that bring their children to that school because they want the leader in me program, they see what a benefit that is. I have, we have had to date 70 families who are no longer zoned for Mitchell Nielsen apply to stay, because they're interested in this. And I've got teachers who have their students in other schools who are bringing them to Mitchell Nielsen next year. They believe very strongly in it. I think it's going to be dynamite, and I wish my kids could have gone through this, because like I said, I think every child deserves this. And it is expensive, but it's a benefit that we will be able to reap for years and years. You know, the initial cost is pretty high, but after that, it's very, very reasonable, I think, and I would much rather spend this on helping 650 children for the rest of their lives than buy, you know, a program or a computer that I'll have to replace in three years.
Well, that was my follow-up question, and of course, there is no way that you can monitor the success of a value of this kind of, you know, monetary value of this kind of investment, but how long has this program been in existence, and what have been the trends with the children that have been in this type of school?
I'll tell you.
Thanks.
I'm so glad you asked. And I got this from the book, and the school that started it was A.B. Combs in North or South Carolina. Remember where that is? And the principal there started it after having gone to see Stephen Covey speak, and her school was a magnet school, and they were losing people and just really needed to do something to save their school, and this is what they've come up with, and they are the flagship school for this. But the Leader in Me schools report in almost 100% unison that they have had improved student achievement, and Mr. Campbell, I know that was your concern last time, so across the board, improved student achievement. More importantly, I think, is significantly enhanced confidence in students, a dramatic decrease in discipline problems, impressive increases in teachers' and administrators' job satisfaction ratings, greatly improved school culture, parents who are delighted and engaged in the process, and business and community leaders who want to lend support.
And I think both the Bowling Green School and Clarksville have been in existence as far as this program, less than four years.
Yes, Bowling Green, I think, is in their third or fourth year, but the Clarksville School, this is their first year doing it, and they blew us away. They were... It... I have several teary people, and they just walk around just in tears, just crying. "This is great. This is what we want for our school." So...
The other thing about the title funds, they have to be used above and beyond what the school district can normally do for a school, so this certainly fits well.
Which is getting harder to do, because the system does so much for us.
Oh, she wants something.
Cookies, more cookies.
Did that take care of you, Mrs. Smith?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Phillips.
I can't imagine a better school than Mitchell Nielsen. This is... For this to happen to, this is so exciting. I'm so excited for you all. On a personal note, I have to say, one of my children went to Discovery School, where they also had student-led conferences, and I just have to say, they're great. They're absolutely awesome. But at the same time, at the end of each conference, I wanted to send my kid out, and I did, because there's some questions you want to ask the teacher...
Of course.
That you just want that dialogue to be private.
Of course.
So, I just wanted to throw that out and say that, you know, if you're going to do student-led conferences, always plan on a few moments for Mom or Dad, too, so... Thank you so much.
Estimated total cost for the first year?
What's the official 40?
A little over 40, I think.
46.
Okay. Do you want to donate?
Don't want to donate?
Donate, sure. I'll take donations.
Where'd you see that?
I pulled up my email.
How come I don't have that on my emails?
I think Dr. Gilbert probably sent it to you when I had it.
We'll make sure that you get that information.
Mr. Campbell. Mrs. Newell.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we get two of your teachers to...
Yes.
We'll just take two.
Okay.
Two volunteers.
Let me think of who I have.
Uh-uh. Let them volunteer.
Tammy.
There you go.
If you sit on the front row.
You volunteer.
Jenny Lovren is a sixth-grade teacher at Mitchell Nielsen, and Tammy Key is one of our interventionists.
Hi.
Hi.
And we're the teary ones.
Yes, we are the teary ones, so we will try to hold it together. Is there anything in particular?
No, 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 no. They just wanted to hear you.
Sure.
If you were crying, there had to be a reason why. You want to tell us a little bit?
Sure. I'll be happy to go first.
Just a little bit.
This is what I saw in Clarksville, or what we saw. We saw students that were empowered. We saw students that weren't only told that they could be leaders, but they were given the tools to become successful leaders. I think lots of times, teachers are great cheerleaders, and we tell them they can, and sometimes we leave gaps in how to get there. And I think this program fills in those gaps, so that they have the tools not only to be a leader in the future, but in the present. And that's what we saw when we were there. Those students were so self-confident. And now, these kids that come from some challenges, and that's what made us so teary, is that they were able to look us face-to-face, firm handshake, tell their name, "Thank you for coming to our school," and be able to speak with confidence in themselves. Data notebooks, for them to be self-monitored. They didn't need the teacher to continuously push them. They were competing within themselves, not with the other... They owned it, and they were proud of it, to sit there, total strangers. "Let me show you. I didn't meet my goal, but this is what I'm doing next time, so that I can." And that wasn't a teacher sitting beside us doing that. That was your fourth grader with the notebook.
Sitting one in one in front of you, talking to you.
Yes.
Talking, looking at you in the eye, engaging you in conversation, and being self-confident. "This is my goal. I didn't make it this time, but here's what I'm going to do to make it next time." As an interventionist, I, you know, I work on reading, and to hear a kid say, "I really didn't meet my fluency goal this time, but I'm reading at home every night," and have that written down, and can show me what she's doing, and it was just something that I think every child deserves.
And just like we said today, and when we were talking to our cohorts...
Stats.
Yes, that whether, you know, not everybody's going to be a CEO. Not everybody's going to do that. It doesn't matter what path that these students go down in the future as far as a career, whether it be that they work as a manager at Wendy's, whether it is that they are at college, but they have these skills to be able to handle themselves in a professional situation, and that they are able to feel confident in themselves in how to handle themselves in professional situations, and be good at whatever they choose to do, and that they are productive adults in the community.
Well, that's one thing I was moved by. There was one fifth-grade student that got up and talked to us that we were all crying over. They'd been doing this program for one year, and he said to us in his presentation without anybody around, "I was not a good kid last year. I was a bully, and through the skills I've learned this year, I've learned to work with my fellow students, and I'm going to take these skills with me to middle school next year." And to be able to see that far in the future, I mean, sometimes we just get caught up in the day-to-day, and even kids, it's what's happening tomorrow. To be able to see where these skills are going to help him in the future, that's amazing to have it had it one year. And I was so impressed with... Robin talked about having... You knew it was a leadership school when you walked in. They're reinforcing it, and they're building those kids up in every hallway display, every conversation they have. It really was something just... My gosh, I'm just so excited. It is wonderful.
Thank you. We didn't cry.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. We'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor of this approval of the Franklin Covey Klein Sales Incorporated, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Such a quiet bunch. Okay. Mr. Anderson.
Wait, hang around. I need the applause for the next one, too. The next item's not as fancy. It's about foundation repair, and it's actually a little bit more than your program in cost. Back a year ago, you all approved a capital outlay, expense of $125,000 for this project. The bid has come in at $45,942. There were four companies that were interested in it, and only one submitted the bids. Thankfully, it was well below what our engineers and architects had predicted it might come in at, and so, $79,000 less. It's a 40-day construction period. It'll start on May 27th, right after school is out, is when they'll start, so they can get it done over the summer. Obviously, at Discovery School, Reeves Rogers, when it converts over, we're going to be closing that school anyhow, so it's a great time to do it, so we don't have any summer programs there. And we need to do it, because a few years ago, we had some rough issues with droughts, and droughts make foundations want to play tricks on the building, and so, it's developing some cracks in the building. It's been there for a while, and they got worse during that time, so we need to come back in and repair those issues. So, we're asking that you approve the low bidder and only bidder on this, for this contract. They are approved by Johnson &amp; Bailey, the architect who did all the design work on it, and the bid work, and it's a Garber Builders LLC out of Gallatin, and the information is there in your board packet.
Mr. Barrett.
I guess I just had one question. So, we only had one bid, and it came in under what we thought it was going to be, but is there any reason why we didn't have more bids? Is it the type of work, or...
Actually, I saw some of the correspondence from other bidders who said, "At this point in time, there's so much construction, they can pick and choose the projects."
Oh.
And for some of the bigger companies like Romac and United Structural Systems, they work with a lot of bigger projects, and this is basically a small project for them, and so they chose not to bid on it because of the size.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Campbell.
Real quick, like, tell us exactly what they're going to be doing.
The section of the foundation at Reeves that has started to fall down and crack, and which makes the walls above it crack, and they're going to come in and build that part up and lift the foundation up and level it all off again.
Okay. Is that for a good portion of the building?
No, not really. It's one of the front corners of the building. It's where all the electric power comes in, and so, we want to make sure that that doesn't make any kind of movement in there to disrupt the electricity.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Anderson? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He needed that.
I think that Mitchell Nielsen thinks a little more exciting.
It was. Well, when the next thing comes up.
All righty, we're now getting ready for board policy review. Ms. Baker.
Okay, the first policy you have before you is Board Policy BF-51 regarding collaborative conferencing. This was approved by the board on first reading at the last meeting. The only change that has been made to the policy since the last meeting is Mr. Barrett's recommendation to use the acronym for the statute in line 13 and 14. Are there any questions regarding this policy?
Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval.
Well, a motion to bring it on second reading at the next meeting?
Thank you, Ms. Baker.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to bring this?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy BF-52 regarding homeschools. This policy was approved by the board at the last regular board meeting on first reading. As we've discussed before, this policy is based strictly on state statutes regarding homeschools, and sets forth the parameters of what we, as a school system, can and are obligated to do under the state law. Are there any questions regarding this policy?
Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to bring this forward for a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, and the next policy that is before you tonight is Board Policy SS-2 regarding contract services for specialized activities with the Extended School Program. There was... This is a revision to an existing policy where we added the language that the Murfreesboro City School Board Attorney and the Director will be included in approval of any contracts for specialized activities with the Extended School Program. This policy, too, has been approved by the board on first reading at the last regular board meeting.
Mr. Barrett.
Line one, just put ESP after Extended School Program.
Okay.
Recommendation.
It's what...
ESP after Extended School Program.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mrs. Rehneer.
Line six, I believe, you want to capitalize attorney.
Okay.
Okay. Are there... Is there any other corrections or additions for Mrs. Baker? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the... Bring it forward for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy before you tonight is Board Policy PER-2 regarding unemployment compensation. This is an existing board policy that merely states that the Murfreesboro City School Board is self-insured against claims for unemployment compensation, and that the administration will give careful attention to managing the personnel function so that there will be a minimum of layoffs. I don't have any recommended changes to the existing policy. Do you have any questions, comments, or recommended changes?
Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to bring this to our next meeting for first reading.
So moved.
Say second.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy STU-1, Emergency Closings. This is an existing school board policy. The additions that have been made to this policy are found in line 19. We added some additional methods of communication that we use to announce emergency closings. The cable channel three is now actually encompass... There's the City of Murfreesboro Communication Department that includes cable channel three, and they call it City TV now, because it's not just seen on Comcast Channel Three, it's also seen on our AT&amp;T cable organization. And also, the Communication Department puts out our announcements for emergency closings, not just through the television station, but through the city website, Twitter accounts, through YouTube. So, they have a number of different methods they use for communicating information to the public. As well as the city school system, we added some of our additional methods to communicate with the parents regarding school closings, to include the website, our Twitter account, and phone notifications to parents and guardians. And then, at the bottom, I added some of the legal references that deal with emergency closings of schools.
Mr. Campbell.
Ms. Baker, line 17. The schools that remain open, ultimate decision regarding attendance left to the parent of the individual child, and I understand that. Now, I deem that it's too dangerous for me to get out and take my child to school. Does my child count it absent that day, or is that not an absence if it's left up to me? You see where I'm coming from?
Yes, I do. And I believe that would count as an absence. And whether it's going to count as an excused or unexcused absence, I believe will be at the discretion of the director and/or principal. And I'll defer to you, Dr. Gilbert.
She's right.
That needs to be clarified, then.
Well, I think, I think that, I think that what we have done in the past is, whenever schools do remain open, it's very, very rare when we, if we remain, if we're going to close, it's usually going to be a whole day. And I can't think of, there may have been one time that we dismissed early, but that's the only time that I can think of. So, I think what happens there, though, is if schools do remain open, and if that, if that parent, for example, comes and picks up that child, we cannot, we're not going to stop that parent from picking up the child. If the schools are open, in the case of snow, for example, we have, in the past, counted those absences as unexcused. But I think that it's going to be really, ultimately, each individual situation has to be looked at. Because there are situations where, and in here, what I would look at that, with talking about if schools do remain open, to me, that's as much talking about a partial day as it is a whole day, so that you would have those early dismissals.
I would like, perhaps, to see, after it says be left to the parent of the individual child, something in there that says, however, if the child is not in attendance, there will be, I don't care whether excused or unexcused absence. When I read it, and I read it three or four times, it just kind of made me feel like that we were leaving it up to the parent on whether or not the child needs to attend school, which is okay. But then, at the same time, the parent says, no, it's too bad for me to get out and take my child to school, but then, so we've left the decision up to the parent, but now we're going to penalize the child because the parent doesn't want to drive in the weather. Is that, am I out in left field, or you don't think so? I just think, I'd like to see something.
I agree. I think we need to have some kind of tagline at the end of that, but some short thing, explaining exactly what you said.
Just, you know, yeah, if it's left up to the, attendance will be left to the parent of the individual child, however, if the child is not in attendance, there will be an absence. Something maybe, Kelly, you know how to word that better than I do. Is that?
However, if the school, if school is in session, the child will be counted absent.
Well, then, if.
And more than likely, this would never happen. I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
I know more than likely it may not, but it only takes one out of 100 cases.
Right.
And I don't want to be reading something into it, but I'm looking at it from the parent's standpoint, that doesn't want to get out and drive in the bad weather.
Dr. Brown, and then Mrs. Phillips.
Well, I think if, under the best decision-making capabilities that the superintendent has, director has, that that individual says the schools need to be open, I think it needs to be counted as an absence, and I think it needs to be counted as an unexcused absence. Because if you leave it to the discretion of the parents, if there's a hard rain in the morning, and they don't want to get out and get wet, they could very easily say, it was pouring down rain this morning, and I don't want my child to be counted as being absent from school. So, if, on our best information possible, if the director says that it's safe for the schools to open, if a parent decides to not send their child, then I think that's an absence and an unexcused absence.
Do you want to leave that sentence off?
After, we'll go back to, Mrs. Phillips had a comment, and then we'll.
I'm sorry. I certainly see both sides of it. I see Mr. Campbell's side talking about how, in some ways, he sees it to give authority to the parent in that situation, and then we tend to penalize the child. On the other hand, I see Dr. Brown's idea about, our director has made the call, therefore, this is the standard that is set. You know, perhaps, there's a middle ground, where we say, if we have a tagline, and I think a tagline's a good idea, as Ms. Smith said, that the taglines say each, you know, if there's seriously inclement weather, then each, you know, each case will be reviewed by the principal, the building principal, or something. Because they, and there may be extenuating circumstances about that, parents' mobility issues, or that, you know, that, that a blanket statement, blanket policy would not be sensitive to, maybe a building principal would have more information on. It's just a thought, that we leave that to the, you know, discretion of the building principal.
Do you have a comment, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, and I agree with what Dr. Brown's saying. I don't disagree with that at all. And I don't disagree with the statement, as it is written. I would just like to have a, have a little bit of a, what'd you say, a tag along sentence or something, stating that if the child is absent, they're counted absent. You know, it may be the parent's discretion, and what Dr. Brown says, you know, it does happen. And I think we need to leave it up to the director of schools. I think she has the capability of deciding the school should be open or closed, with all the resources that she has. But I don't want the parent to say, well, you told me it was my decision, so if something was left, just saying that if they're absent, they're counted absent.
Dr. Gilbert, you wanted to make.
I just was listening to the discussion, and I wondered, if you want to leave the sentence in there, I'm certainly fine with that. I was just hearing the discussion, and wondering if you wanted to just delete that sentence.
Mrs. Renier, was that, you wanted to comment on that?
Well, I was just going to also agree with Dr. Brown, and your comment, Ms. Phillips, about the, almost like the degree of inclement weather. As Dr. Brown said, it could be raining hard, and that could be inclement weather for one person, where six inches of snow, we wish, would be inclement weather for somebody else. More than likely, you're going to take care of this before the day ever begins. We know that. But in the event that it's, something crazy happens, I think, as Dr. Brown said, we need either to take the sentence out, or have, add that sentence. That however, if the child is absent, they will be counted, or however, if the child is not in attendance, they'll be counted absent.
Mrs. Smith, and then Dr. Brown.
I'm going to revise my comments. I think Dr. Philbert's right. Take that first sentence out. Just take the whole sentence out, and that resolves it.
That was my comment.
Mrs. Baker? Ms. Baker has that. Is there any more discussion concerning emergency closings?
That doesn't violate anything with Tennessee Code, does it?
No, I don't believe it does. I'll double-check before.
Okay. Alrighty, well, we'll, if there's no more discussion, we'll entertain a motion to bring it forward for first reading at the next meeting.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you is Board Policy STU-2 regarding school year and the school calendar. There were some, this is the current policy that is on the books, with just very, very minor addition, to clarify that in line one and two, where it says a minimum of 180 days, inserted of classroom instruction, just to clarify that that meant the actual 180 days of classroom instruction.
Mrs. Smith?
Can't it just say instruction?
There are times, I believe, that they go on field trips, or there may be times that it's out of classroom instruction, and the code uses that language of classroom instruction, is the way that the code section regarding school year, school calendar, and when it says you need 180 days, the code actually says classroom instruction. So, just in case at some point, we change to have different type of instruction, but that's, that's the language that was used in the code, that's why.
That doesn't seem, I mean, to me, that you can certainly learn outside of a classroom, but instruction can take place outside of a classroom, and field trips are educational. Get on, get on that, Kelly.
Well, I share the same concerns, because the students go to LBL for three or four days. They're certainly in a learning experience, but that would not be what we would typically define as a classroom. So, we need to be sure that that's counted in the 180 days.
Ms. Campbell.
And you may determine, I'd use what we typically consider a classroom. But nowadays, classrooms don't have to be inside four walls.
I understand, and we need to be clear about that.
Mrs. Baker, if you'll look that up.
I will, I'll check it.
And sometimes, there's a reason why the state uses certain language, so if you'll look that up for us, and bring it back. If there's no more discussion, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I had talked to Ms. Baker about the possibility of presenting this to you, and she said she thought it would be appropriate at this time. And I do think it's important for us to have consensus on this, so that we can let our parents know. Tennessee Code Annotated 496304 allows us, local school board of education, or private or church-related school that exceeds the full six and one-half hours of legally mandated instructional time, didn't say classroom instruction, but instructional time, per day, by one-half hour daily for the full academic year, to be credited with additional instruction time. The excess instructional time is accumulated and amounts up to, but not exceeding 13 instructional days, and those may be applied toward meeting instructional time missed due to inclement weather at a discretion. This is the first time that I can remember the state allowing this, but we have received permission for school districts to take up to two days at the very end of the day, very end of the year this year, as professional development. I talked with the principals, actually emailed them, and asked them to respond to me individually. They all responded, they thought that this would be very beneficial for our students. Currently, our last day, our last half-day for students is May 23rd. We are suggesting that the last half-day would be on that Wednesday, instead of on that Friday, and that we would use the 22nd and the 23rd as professional development days. I've talked with the state, what they are looking for, and what we are going to propose to you and to them, is that we would be working on our Common Core standards, we would be looking at assessments, we would be looking at our Tier Two Math and Reading strategies. We feel like that it's excellent use of the time, and so, I would ask for your approval to adjust the calendar this year, so that we can have our last two days, which would be the last full day and a half for students as professional development days.
Mrs. Smith?
Of course, my first thought is, the kids are not going to be upset about this. But what about, there are already things on the calendar.
I talked with.
Like sixth grade graduations.
I talked with the principals, because I was concerned about that. There is one school, Casey Lane, that the children will be coming back that last day, they would be coming back from LBL, and they would be having their graduation that following night, because that's when it was already scheduled. But they felt that that would not be a problem. All the other schools responded that they thought it was a very good idea. Because I did express to them, I said, I want to know if you already have something scheduled, before we even present this.
So, they don't have plays scheduled at school, you know, pack, whatever?
What I heard from, I heard from every principal, that they thought it would be a good idea.
Okay, great.
I think what you're going to find is, most of the schools now are going to have their graduations, and their, like their dare graduations and their plays, they're going to have them earlier than those last, those last final day and a half, those last days and a half.
Field days.
I didn't hear.
I think I know of one that's already scheduled during that last.
And I'll be, and I'll be happy to forward the emails to you. But I did email each one, and ask them to individually reply to me, because I didn't want to hear it as a group, I wanted to hear what each school had.
Mrs. Renier?
I have a question. You said this is the final day and a half for students.
Right.
So, that would be the Friday, originally scheduled right now, the Friday, the 23rd of May, the students would be in session half-day.
Right.
The other half of that day would have been what?
They would have been dismissed, but teachers would have been there.
I know, teachers would have been there. Would that have been workday time for them, or is that, would that have been professional development originally? How was that scheduled?
Well, technically, their last day is the 27th of May.
Right.
Which is that Tuesday.
Right.
So, I would be looking at having them have those two days as professional development. Technically, their last half-day would still be the 27th on the calendar.
Okay, so, my, I guess what I'm getting at here is, if you're having the students' last day and a half as professional development, does that include the afternoon, so they will get two full days of professional development? I'm speaking for teachers now.
Yes, so that half-day, I see what you're saying. So, that Wednesday that would normally be their half-day, would be still whatever they would do that final half-day, as far as the teachers were concerned.
Okay, but what about their workday? Don't they get a workday at the end?
They have a day listed as May the 27th, right now.
So, that is, that would be their workday.
Right.
Will they have, and will there be a discretionary time, should I not bring that up?
I'll be happy to discuss that with you later, Ms. Renier.
Slap my hand again.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other, oh, Mrs. Smith?
So, would this help us jumpstart some of these moves?
Absolutely. Well, what it will help us do is jumpstart the next school year. For example, we're looking at, as I said, we're looking at Common Core training, we're looking at some technology training, which we desperately need. So, that would help us as far as what we were going to do in the summer, or particularly at the very beginning of next year.
But I would assume that, Mr. Anderson, we could jumpstart some of this transition that's going to be such a big deal.
Those two days have to be for professional development, by the state.
I see.
That's, and they're very specific about what we can use them for. But they have already given me contingent approval for what we have submitted. We have to submit an agenda to them, with ideas of what we're going to do. We also have to do that, I'll have to submit for next year's half-days, I'll have to submit by April 15th, a tentative agenda for the three days that will have days for, half-days next year, so that's not unusual. But we are, we do have to use them for professional development.
Okay. Mrs. Renier?
Is the professional development going to be building-wise, building-wide?
What we'll be doing is, we'll be offering it district-wide, but it will be different choices. And I can, Karen has already looked at some of the things we'll be doing. We have talked with the core office about coming in and training us. We also have, I would love to get Nancy Duggan in for training. Karen is going to be presenting some on the formative assessment, and we also have the technology. Karen, would you, would you like to address that, please? Because my mind is not.
For the Dell training that we're going to be doing, we would have had to do it in the summer. And then, what happens is, you have to depend on volunteers to come. This way, we can have teachers come, and it won't interfere with anybody's schedule. So, we'll have 60 teachers participating in the first two days of their training. The follow-up would be next year, so that would jumpstart us for summer. Then, they could take that information during the summer, and work with it, and plan with it, and think ahead of how they could incorporate it next year, which would be pretty powerful for us. So, that's, two days of training would be the Dell training for technology. We also are going to do some training around our RTI interventions that we're doing with reading. We're going to do a refresher on some of the curriculum materials that we use. And then, so a half-a-day would be based on their curriculum, their reading, My Sidewalk's curriculum that they use. And then, the other half of a day would be teaching the teachers how to use one of our softwares for reading intervention called Lexia. So, we would partner those two. And then, we would have some assessment training on Common Formative Assessments, looking at those standards, breaking them down, figuring out how to look at classroom assessments to make those more effective. We have, the EL, ASL teachers have new standards that they're going to have to incorporate next year, that are new state standards that have been adopted. We can work with those teachers on those standards, helping them understand them and get prepared for the next year as well. So, we've really looked at things that were. were big things, big ideas, that we can pull teachers in and principals can get good representation for all of these things. We have several other things listed on here as well. Those are the big pieces.
You said, like with Dell training, it would be 60 teachers.
Yes, ma'am.
We have 500 and some teachers.
Yes.
That's kind of a drop in the bucket.
It, it is. And what we're, what our plan is, and I think, I think I might have mentioned this before, but maybe I didn't. We're going to have one person per grade level that's going to be like our-
Go-to person?
Well, our, really our champion, you know, our person that would get us started. We're going to, our trailblazers. So we're going to start with teachers that are very enthusiastic about it. We have two classes of 30. They'll actually be creating units in this training, units of instruction that infuse technology, and they'll have support to do that. Then they can take those units back to their teams, and then they can actually incorporate some of those things in their grade-level teams. But they would be the champions for that. And that training is provided to us from Dell at no charge. So they're giving us, you know, I think it's four, eight, actually eight days of professional development, and-
Have we had some already?
We've had some things already, yes.
With these same people or with other-
Not with these same people, no.
Faculty members I'm speaking of, is that what you're speaking of? Or are you talking about the Dell people?
Yes, we've had, we've had other things. We've had some math training, some computerized program for math. And we did kind of the same thing. We brought in some champions for the buildings, and then they could go back and present some things to their teachers and then help get it moving that way. So what I'm trying to do is just build some support throughout the district for these products, the things we're using.
On the Common Core, if you're going to do more training on that, where are we as far as training on Common Core? Because we've been doing this for three years now.
That's right.
So, where are we? I, I don't mean to be ugly, but I mean, do we still have a lot of people untrained, or is this just perfecting what we're doing?
I, I think at this point, we started out with only a few people getting to go to the state training, and then they came back, and we've offered, we've offered extensive training on Common Core. I've worked a lot with team leaders and with grade-level teams, helping them understand what the standards are. So that's been kind of a progression for us for the past few years.
Right.
This year, our emphasis has really been on breaking those standards down and understanding how to assess those standards. So a lot of training has gone in, that we've been leading this year, has been around the assessment portion of that. The state's going to offer some more training this summer. That's another advantage of us getting to do some of the district training that we need to do so that our teachers will be freed up to go to some of the state training as well. But I think it's a work in progress. You know, I wish I could check a box and say we're done, but I think it's going to take a lot of shifts in thinking about this whole process and what instruction would look like under Common Core.
When Karen started this, we actually started out planning on her just training one, one teacher per grade level.
Per grade level.
And what we got from the principals and from the teachers that went to it, they said this is the best training we've ever had. So now you've trained, is it three per grade level that we, I can't even remember now.
I know. It's been about 30-something days of training that I've done with teachers. And as teachers have requested more training, and as we could, we've added it. We'll do this, and I'll get to do, I'll get to have 30 more teachers at this training. And then this summer, I'll offer them during the summer so other teachers can come. But we've trained quite a few teachers. I would say all of our sixth-grade teachers have had it. Most of our fifth, and kind of, we've offered it across the, across the board. So it would give us 30 more teachers for that as well.
Our principals and assistant principals are in what's called Leadership 101 and 202 training. We actually have Kimberly Osfran, who is one of our assistant principals, is actually a trainer in the 101. So we had assistant principals there today, and they were doing the training too.
I have another question then. Since you said, Dr. Gilbert, that this, this current school year, the teachers only had to earn six in-service points, but you're going back to 12 next year. So if you do summer in-service, do they get to count those points?
Yes, they do. We, we track all of that, and they get it.
Okay.
So they would get, they would get their full pay for it, not just a stipend. It would be a full pay for those two days.
And I, and I am wrong because I'm looking at the 13, 14. They earn 12 this year, and they're going to be earning 12 next year.
12 next year, yes.
Well, so I thought, it's always been, I think it's always been 12.
It was two years ago. We only had to do six.
Oh, God, it's correct.
I knew it was one.
Because I, I was going to say, if you're going to suddenly bump something up, they're not going to be happy. So-
No, it's just, you have to do-
Well, actually, the reason we're bumping it up is because they had asked for, one, they've asked for two things specifically. One is the Tier Two, which we're doing. And then the other thing, they, they wanted to have, they, they are wanting more individualized training. So they're wanting, now that we have the foundation with some of these things, then they're wanting some things, like some are interested in Tier Two reading, some are interested in vocabulary, some may be interested in higher-order thinking, some may be interested in questioning. And so I see us, in addition to probably less days during the day, of things that we really need because the foundation is there. I do see us opening up more voluntary kinds of things in the afternoons and in the summer. And one, we haven't been able to do it in the summer, frankly, because of all the state trainings.
Well, I, I know that's been a problem. And, you know, gosh, those of us who've taught or been principals or directors or whatever, know that at the end of the day, you're pooped.
That's right.
And you really don't want to do that, but you still have to earn points. And, you know, if you, if they do it on their time, they can earn those points and get that out of the way.
That's right.
So I think that's important for them.
Right. I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renee. Mrs. Phillips?
Well, we're sort of on the subject. Earlier the, and, and just now in this discussion, Common Core came up. There are, we, I'm sure we all have all seen on Facebook or various other, other, other media outlets, these little news blips highlighting some, you know, momentary insanity on Common Core. What are we doing? What, who is looking at Common Core and finding these things that need to be addressed that are giving, that's giving the whole, the whole concept a bad idea? Is anybody looking at that?
I will tell you how we're handling it in our school district.
Okay.
We have always had standards. The term "teachers of the test" we have always had. And I don't like that term, but I will tell you that when teachers, if we say that assessment is measuring what we believe should be taught, then indeed, we are teaching the test. Because whenever a teacher designs her objectives, she's also going to design her assessment to match those objectives, and those objectives come straight from the standards. Our teachers that I have talked with and that I've been through the training myself, we feel comfortable with Common Core. And I think that the key, as with any standards, we have had standards that the state has designed, and when I say the state, I mean principals and teachers and State Department folks have designed, as long as I can remember. The standards are what are expected to be learned, how they are taught, with what curriculum they are taught. That's totally left up to the school district. We still design our own curriculum. We still choose our own textbooks. Our textbooks are different than the county's textbooks, and that's fine. Our teachers chose them. Our teachers will continue to choose them. Karen is meeting right now with, we have just finished meeting with Social Studies, the Social Studies textbook. And, and we will adopt one. We probably will not buy it because that's something that we feel that we can probably save money, but still, there is a curriculum there. Curriculum can be defined a lot of different ways. There's a curriculum here happening tonight. It's a hidden curriculum, but it's still people are learning. I think curriculum is anything that happens in a learning environment. And so I, I trust our teachers. I think they, we have the best teachers in the world. I think we have the best administrators in the world. I think we saw here tonight the example of the kinds of teachers we have. I have utmost respect for them as professionals. I think they are perfectly capable of designing the, the strategies that they need. What they have asked for is help with ideas for strategies. That's what our professional development is focused on. We have been implementing Common Core for three years. The exemplary teachers that I talk to that are in education now, that live it day in and day out, are very comfortable with it. And if they're not, they certainly can tell me about it. I encourage anyone who has any questions about it to come see some of our teachers' teaching because it's, it's pretty amazing work. It's very engaging. Our children enjoy it. And so I'm very comfortable with what we're doing in Murfreesboro City.
To follow that up, I, I think that's an excellent, excellent statement. As a former, and they kind of disbanded the program, but the TSBA ambassadors, you know what I would really love to have is the good news about Common Core statements, like you made, made. And I would love to have that from Ms. Trail's office or from, you know, wherever that would be most appropriate to come from, so that we can get that good, as board members and as ambassadors, we could, for public education, get that news out there. You know, share some of the good news of, of not just Murfreesboro City Schools, but, you know, the whole concept of Common Core.
Absolutely.
And, and those kind of things. I think it's so important.
And I will say, Ms. Phillips, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I will, I will tell you that I have utmost respect for Don Odom. I think he's a consummate professional. And if he were here tonight, he would be telling you exactly the same thing.
Right, right. We need, you know, that's what, you see, I'm not, I have to, you are, are, you have the educational expertise, and we're relying on you. And I have utmost faith and trust in your decision on this. And I really do. And I just want everybody out there to know that I have the utmost faith in the decisions Dr. Gilbert has made regarding this. And so, but it just cheers us up, us the good news, if we could get it in a little email blip that we could get out and, you know, kind of start getting the, a good buzz going, instead of such a negative buzz. Because we don't want our legislators, you know, backtracking on us in support. And, or anything like that. So, thank you.
And I, and I will add, I will add something that Mr. Odom would say if he were here. When you look at the test scores in Murfreesboro City and Rutherford County, he may not speak for Murfreesboro City, although he could on this one, but he will tell you that the difference that he has seen as far as their growth, he attributes to Common Core over the last three years.
Well, we're going to go back to get your motion for those days that you need.
Thank you.
I'd almost forgot the motion, but Dr. Gilbert is asking us to please-
Those two last days.
Yes. And the last half-day for students then would be the 21st.
There we go.
So moved.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of our.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Mrs. Price, just in case, we kind of wandered off the path a little bit, but that's all right. You'll get with Dr. Gilbert to make sure we get that motion straightened out. We have the gist of it. We just maybe didn't state it quite back when we were here. Okay, Ms. Baker, let me apologize to you. We did kind of get off on a, but we needed that. So we'll go back, get you done.
Yes. The next board policy you have before you is Board Policy STU 5 regarding assignment of students to schools and classes. STU 5 is an existing policy in the, in the board policy manual. The revisions that have been made to this policy that you see tonight are revisions resulting from a new state statute that was adopted last legislative session that does not go into effect until the 14, 15 school year. That's why we're bringing this to you tonight for passage. And if you do agree with this policy, I would strongly recommend that this be one of the policies that we go on and pass on first reading tonight and second reading at the regular board meeting, because it will be important for parents to be aware that they have this option. And first, let me explain the, the new state statute. The state statute is TCA Section 49-2-128. That statute required school districts to provide for a limited open enrollment period during, prior to the next, the 2014, 15 school year that would allow parents to choose from a list of schools set forth by the school district to transfer their students to, if space is available at those schools. And the school district is to set a specific time within which that request has to be made. So you'll notice there, under lines 19 through 28, that are entitled "open zoning", it says, "Upon recommendation of the director, each year, the board will approve which schools will be available for open zoning. That decision will be based on current and future available space for students, principal recommendations, and any other appropriate consideration needed at that time. If the transfer is granted, the parents or guardians are responsible for transportation of the student to the new school. The student shall maintain satisfactory attendance, behavior, and effort to remain in the new school. This policy shall be effective starting with the 2014, 2015 school year. For the 2014, 2015 school year, all out-of-zone transfer requests must be submitted for approval by June 15 of 2014. And then for any subsequent school year, all out-of-zone transfer requests must be submitted for approval by May 15." And that June 15, 2014 deadline is why I am encouraging you to maybe fast-track the adoption of this policy. But that is the significant change that has been made to the existing policy. And again, that is a change based on a state statute that goes into effect with next school year.
Mrs. Phillips?
I just have a question. I, I don't think this would include the Discovery School.
No, it would not. And, and Mr. Anderson and Dr. Gilbert would look at before, before that June, during, before the open enrollment time starts, they're going to look and see what, if any of our schools have potential space available based on the numbers they know are going to go there and the future space that's needed for that school based on the growth they anticipate in that particular school zone. So, that, that would include, you know, it won't include every single school.
Okay.
It will only include those that, that don't run the risk of being overcrowded or what have you. So that, there will be a limited number of schools that are eligible for that open enrollment.
Thank you.
Mrs. Renee?
Could there be a possibility that we would have none?
There's always that potential. It depends on how much-
With us, with us growing and our potential for growth and everything, would that be a possibility that we would have none? Or is that against TCA now?
No. It's within the school district's discretion to determine which, where's, where that flexibility exists within your school buildings. And so that, that is, that, that option's there for, for us to decide, do we have any room to allow additional students outside that zone to attend that school?
Okay.
And Mr. Anderson, you, you have to handle the zoning request on a day-in, day-out basis. So if you have any input?
Yes, the, we have kind of a built-in system already in the controlled-choice schools where the principals can take up the number of students that they have capacity for. So it's kind of a little bit built in. When this new law came, came about, we knew this was going to be an issue we were going to have to deal with. And we have been really doing that every year already, allowing people to go to schools that were not as crowded. And, and I've always tried to protect the schools that I knew the growth was coming and I knew would be an issue. What adds in this policy is that Dr. Gilbert and the board will then have the say into what, which ones end up being as the school where they can go as, as a choice.
Mr. Campbell?
So when will you know, or will we know which one of these, which one of our schools is going to be available for open zoning?
Well, this year, we're going to start out with the three schools that are, that are the controlled-choice schools to begin with. And every, every-
And those are?
Mitchell, Nelson, Hobgood, and Bradley are the controlled-choice schools. Every year, and I would recommend, and we put that on the annual agenda, to have it done by a certain date for the board to approve ahead of time, and so they can have it, have it into us by May, by May 15. Different school systems already have started these. Rutherford County's cutoff date is April 15. Williamson County's is May 15. So it's, we're trying to keep in the same basic arena. But we'll know, I would, I would recommend in March that we have a decision made for the future. Obviously, this law's new, so we haven't, haven't done that. So the three controlled-choice schools can actually fit very well.
So we won't know until, okay, we've got three controlled-choice schools now we know of.
Right.
Now, the open zoning part, you won't know how many seats are available until?
Well, this being the year that we've done a total rezoning of the district, I'm very apprehensive to open any other schools to start with for fear that we don't know exactly where one's going to land this first year out.
Okay.
So I was pretty content with the three controlled-choice because that's already in process.
Okay. So we wouldn't have any open-zone schools? What you're suggesting at this point?
At this point, that's where I was-
I understand that, okay.
Well, at this point, you're saying we'll have three open-zone schools. Well, at, at this point, you're saying we'll have three open-zone schools, Mitchell, Nelson, Hobgood, and Bradley?
Correct.
Okay.
Was that, I'll get my terminology here right. Those are controlled-choice schools.
Right.
Not open-zone schools.
They're both.
They're both.
But even, even the open zoning, it goes up to the capacity of the school, and this, and those schools can take students up to the capacity. It's up to the principals to say, "We can't take any more students from out of zone." So even under a true open zoning process, no school's gonna take more than they can actually have seats for.
And, and to project what the future would be, because typically, we're going to want those students to be able to stay there.
All right. And, and we've had experience, when scales opened up, within three years, that school opened up so fast, and that area grew so fast, we had to rezone, and Pittard was the same way. So I'm very careful right now over, about overall creek, because it's gonna grow just as fast, so I'm very apprehensive about making that an open-zone school to start with.
So that's why the, when, when it says here, "That decision will be based on current and future available space," that's where that comes into play.
Okay. Mrs. Phillips, Mr. Barrett, Mrs. Renier, and Mrs. Smith?
I think I know the answer to this, Mr. Anderson, but does this affect in any way or change anything to do with transportation for those controlled-choice schools?
No, we don't have any transportation for the controlled-choice schools right now.
Okay, so you mean Mitchell, Nelson doesn't get any buses?
Well, they do for the area that's zoned to them.
Only they're zoned, only they're zoned area. Okay, okay. Um, hmm. Let's see. I guess that's it. I mean, it doesn't change anything, so the transportation's not affected?
No.
No, okay.
Mr. Barrett?
My first question was, how does this jive with what we passed? Well, you know, we have it on, listed on the website right now with the 2014, 2015 rezoning, you know, we have the grandfathering, all that stuff. How does this jive with?
Well, the grandfathering rules basically trump what is available. They can go there if, because you've passed, rising fifth and sixth graders can stay, so that's fine. That, that doesn't affect anything. The rest of the zoning, we've really tried to control where people will go in K 1, 2, 3, and 4. And so it really, I don't feel it's gonna have the impact on it as the fact that people might want to have a choice go somewhere else, and we just have to be very careful, because if we allow, if we allow people to just go wherever they want to go, you will never control your school zones and, and the capacities.
So, and I think I already heard the answer to this, so controlled-choice and open-zone, it's two different definitions in here, in what I'm reading?
Right. And, and Kelly had recommended that we put a definition for the term controlled-choice, which we have.
I almost suggested you want to put that into the open zoning, but from what I just heard, open-zone's different from a controlled, okay.
Thank you, thanks. Mrs. Renier?
My question was gonna be, on these three controlled-choice schools, do we actually have classroom space available at this time? Because right now, we know 70 additional Mitchell, Nelson students will not take their transfer. So do you know if we will have space now?
Well, we have space, for example, Bradley has over 200 spaces that people can choose to go there. Part of the Brad, part of the people who are going there have been rezoned, that, that came there on choice, have been rezoned to the Reeves-Rogers. So we really don't know how many are gonna choose to go to the Reeves-Rogers, or how many are gonna want to continue to go to Bradley. So right now, we're really in a limbo state of, we don't know who's gonna grandfather, we don't know how many siblings are gonna go with them, and we don't know who's gonna want to go to the controlled-choice and who's not.
Didn't we ask for that information already, be turned in?
Well, we had registration, but not everybody registers-
I know, well.
-right off the bat, so.
But it should have painted a little bit of a picture.
Well, it has, in some, in some areas, some areas it hasn't.
Okay. So I would say we're a little in, yeah, definitely in limbo. Okay, thank you.
And that's why I really don't want to open it up this first year.
Right, yeah.
My turn?
Mr. Barrett?
Your turn.
So if someone goes to one of the open-zone schools, do they, y'all can ask this, but are they gonna have to reapply every year?
We have a policy that every year, everyone has to reapply to each school. Because what happens if you get a-
But they could fall out of their, could they say, "No, we don't have room for the open-zone people"?
For the open-zone? Basically, what we've tried to do is not let that many open-zone get in, that if the area grows, that we have to take people out. Since I've been here, we have not taken anybody out who is there already as, as a choice. What has happened is if people do not abide by the rules as, as, as Ms. Baker has put in here, then they can go back to their zone schools. And most of the time, what happens on that is when someone who is providing transportation for their child doesn't get them to school on a regular basis, and they're better off getting on the bus and staying in their zone school. And so that's really the only time. We, we try to never take them out of the mix once the, once they have made this choice to go here, and the school has accepted them, and they be, they follow the rules and regulations.
And as far as the attendance issue, when the parent's providing their own transportation, often, when I'm in truancy court, if part of the reason the child isn't getting to school is because the parent isn't, has asked for them to be, go to a school that they're not zoned for, so they don't have bus service, and they're not getting to school because of the parent's inability to transport them, the judge will say, "You need to go to your zone school." And so that, that's, that's typically the reason I see them not going to this open zoning method.
Mr. Barrett? Wait a minute. Ms. Smith, that take care of which?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Barrett?
I just saw line 15, we probably want to put, it says, "Second sentence, director of schools," and we probably want to put "or designee," since we got "or designee" two other places in that same paragraph.
Okay.
Where it says, "Director of schools may, director of schools or designee may in hardship cases," but.
Are there any other questions or discussion for policy STU 5?
And I'm asking that, if you would, please approve this on first reading tonight.
So moved.
Second?
There's a motion, second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy STU 6 regarding School Day. This is an existing board policy. I believe the only change that was made to the existing policy is in line 4. The word "state" was put in front of "instructional time."
Dr. Brown?
In line of our discussion on the policy STU 2, the first sentence where it says, "All students are expected to be in class on time each morning at the student's assigned school," would it be better to either delete the last part of that or delete the entire sentence?
Would you like for it to read "at the student's school"?
Well, the problem is, we were trying to define a classroom earlier, and if you've got students at LBL, then they're not at their school.
Class at LBL?
Okay.
Just delete the last phrase?
So you could say, "All students are expected to be in class on time each morning."
Period.
Period, okay. Got it.
Period.
Keep it simple.
Are you on it at 6, first line?
Oh my God.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Baker has that changed. Are there any other questions about STU 6? If not, we'll entertain a motion. So moved.
Seconding.
Thank you. There's a motion, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy you have before you tonight is Board Policy STU 8 regarding Admission of Suspended or Expelled Students. This is an existing school board policy. You can see in lines 1 and 3, there are just very minor changes. It is based on a state statute that authorizes the school district to deny enrollment to any child that is coming from another district where they are currently on suspension or, or have been expelled, expelled from another school district.
Any questions for Mrs. Baker on this one? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for first reading. Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion, second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, the next policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy STU 12 regarding Student Accident Reports. This is an existing board policy. The revisions that were made to this policy include ensuring that the city of Murphysboro's Risk Manager receives a copy of any accident report that deals with an accident involving a student. Of course, you understand that the school system participates in the city's self-insurance fund for accidents and injuries that occur to students and staff, and that process goes through the city's Risk Manager.
Mrs. Renier?
As a point of clarification here, Ms. Baker, would this, who would be the one responsible for forwarding this to the city's Risk Manager? Do we need to include a line that says that, or will it be an administrative directive, or what kind of, how do, how do we know who's doing that?
I believe there is an administrative directive that details the steps that have to be taken and the, the documents that must be completed when a student accident occurs.
Okay.
And that, that's referenced, there's AD 13.
Excuse us. Mr. Barrett?
I noticed on the second paragraph, you got "or designee." Do we need to do that for the first one, or is it going right to the, you, Linda, Director?
Well, it typically comes to me, but it doesn't have to.
I didn't know.
And it's, it's, it's gonna be spelled out in the administrative directive, but if you wanted to be consistent there, like you were before, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mrs. Baker? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved. Seconding.
There's a motion, second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, the-
This one isn't that thing.
The last policy is Board Policy STU 15 regarding Student Records Inspection and Correction Procedure. This policy is based on a federal law that is the, typically referred to as FERPA, is the Federal Educational Rights and Privacy Act. And under that law, students, a parent or an eligible student, which you may ask me why that's included, because an eligible student is defined under the federal law as someone that has attained the age of 18. Often, we may have people come back and ask to look at their student records, because we must keep them permanently. So I, I have still included reference to an eligible student. Under that law, there is a procedure that exists for individuals to request that their student records be corrected, and our current policy did not detail that procedure that is set out in the federal regulations. And I have revised the policy to include a reference to that procedure, so that it's clear what the procedure is if a parent or an eligible student is requesting that their student records be amended due to inaccurate misleading or, or an otherwise in violation of the student's privacy rights under FERPA.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Smith?
I have several questions. Who is the records custodian?
Excuse me? I'm sorry, repeat that.
I didn't hear you. Who is the records custodian?
The records custodian, there is a records, at every single school, the records custodian is designated as either the principal, or I believe typically the attendance secretary. And then at central office, it depends on which record you're talking about. It could be the individual that's maintaining the attendance records, if that's the type of record they're looking at. It could be someone, the special ed department, if it's special education records that you're dealing with that may be housed at central office. But primarily, the records custodian for existing students is either gonna be set forth as the principal or the attendance secretary at the individual school they attend.
Okay, and so when a, a response to a records request, that has to be responded to within seven days. Is that correct?
Under the Tennessee Public Records Act, you have to give someone a response within seven days to tell them when the record will be available for inspection and our review. Now, under FERPA, the federal law regarding educational records, we have up to 45 days to respond to a request for a copy of their records.
So which one wins?
Well, we would have to tell the parent within seven days how long it's gonna take us to gather those records. And, for example, I've received an actual, a request for records of an individual that went to school, in our school system, in the 70s, the 60s, the 60s. That's taking a lot longer to find those records than seven days, and it may take longer than 45 days, but we're working on finding those records. So it, it's gonna depend on, you know, how, how dated the records are that are being requested.
Okay, and then, in the fees for copies area, which I think is area 23, line 20, are fees set by the Office of-
Open Records Council.
Okay, and if the fee represents an unusual hardship, it may be waived in part or entirely by the records custodian. What does that line mean?
And that is typically left up to the principal to make that decision, or they may defer to the director, depending on the number of, of pages. If we're talking about a request that is, because the, the cost for a copy of, of a record is 15 cents per page, and-
That's been set by?
That's been set by the Tennessee Office of Open Records Council. And that's referenced, I believe we have another policy that deals with public records requests. And we can't charge more than 15 cents per page. We can charge 50 cents a page if it's a color copy. But typically, people just want the black and white copy, and that's 15 cents a page. So it's gonna be a number of pages when someone may have a hardship to ask for copies of those records. And depending on the situation, we can, the, the principal or the director could decide to waive that fee. And I believe we, as a district, have allowed up to three copies of a student's transcript with no charge. And that's been the, the school board's policy for a number of years, since at least 2001.
Okay, and then on the hearing, uh, number 76, okay, hold on. On the hearing, line of number 69, and actually, the hearing must be held within a reasonable time. What's the reasonable time?
The, that, the law just said a reasonable time. They did not, they used that language. They didn't set any specific timeframe. So typically, I, I would think having it within 15 working days, in other situations, has been deemed reasonable. But of course, it's, you're, you're looking at the situation, how long it takes to get everyone on agreement on a date when you're trying to schedule hearings of that nature.
Okay, and the, and who would be, under line 77, the hearing may be conducted by any MCS administrative staff member who does not have a direct interest in the outcome of the hearing. What kind of person would that be?
You would probably pull in a principal or an assistant principal from another school that isn't responsible for the records in question, or you may pull in a central office staff member that isn't directly responsible for the records in question. For example, if it's special education records that they are requesting to be corrected, you wouldn't want to call someone from the Special Education Department to serve on this panel. You would want to call someone maybe from instruction to serve on the panel. But if, that's, when it's saying administrative staff, it's really focusing on a principal or assistant principal or a central office certified staff member.
I think those are all my questions. The reasonable time thing, see, even though, I guess, in legalese, that might mean something, but that doesn't mean anything to me.
Okay.
That, and I, obviously, I've been reading the newspaper, and I just want to make sure that we don't get in trouble.
Okay. So you'd like to see there be established, what, what-
A specific number of days. I mean, if it's 15 days, working days, or what, what you deem as reasonable, because the, to do the research and get the copies made.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Barrett, Mrs. Renier, and Dr. Brown?
Collier asked all my questions, so she must have really good questions, so I don't have any.
Mrs. Renier?
Well, I just have, just for maybe point of clarification, besides special ed, what other types of records might a parent be looking for, in your experience?
Okay, in my experience, the type of records that parents are most concerned with are the attendance records. the attendance records, the discipline records, the academic records, that would include their report cards, and may include any of the testing that's been done, those test results. And then you have your IEPs, your 504s, those records could also be included. But that typically encompasses the majority of records that I've seen parents make requests to view.
So I guess my next question, I realize we have to have this under the law, but my next question would be, for instance, you're saying you're researching something from the 70s. What happens if there's a parent or the eligible student who comes back and wants records from the 60s or 70s? Yes, they can be found, but what if there's a question about the records and they want something changed or amended, and the other parties are no longer available? How does, what happens at that point in time? How is that overlooked or compensated for, or what happens in that process?
That's a good question. We would have to go through the procedure of having a hearing.
Hearing.
And if there isn't sufficient evidence to justify changing the records, then we would probably deny the request to actually change the record. But that individual would have the right to add to their record a statement of why they made the request that it be changed.
Oh, okay.
And if you've noticed, even if they lose in the hearing, lose getting the record physically changed, they still get to add a piece of paper to the record that they made a request, they disagree with the way the record's written.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Dr. Brown.
Well, this policy refers to a hearing panel in several places, but as Ms. Smith said in line 77 and 78, it says the hearing may be conducted by any MCS administrative staff member. So to me, that implies one person and not a panel.
And I note that that was a problem in reading the reg. The reg is actually written with reference to a panel, and then it says that you must include a staff member. So I can clarify that it will be more than one administrative staff persons, to ensure that it's going to be a panel. And if the board has a suggestion, whether they prefer two or three to set up a panel, I'm fine with your recommendation.
Well, I am just concerned with having one person review it, so I think we need to be clear that it would be more than one individual.
Mr. Barrett.
I make that recommendation, we make it three people, so there's no ties or anything.
Okay, got it.
Are there any other questions or comments or changes for this particular policy, STU 15? Hearing none, will it entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in second, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, we got that done. If you would review your two draft agendas, please, one for the 9th and the other for the 22nd. On the 22nd, if there's anything that you noticed or you'd like to have added, if you would get that to Dr. Gilbert, and we'll get that, it may be something that she can answer for you without it being added to this agenda. Be sure and get it to her in plenty of time.
So the swearing in of the new board members would be when? Because it-
It's in May.
It's in May.
So is it in May?
First meeting, first or second meeting in May, first meeting in May, is that right, Mrs. Baker?
Yes, we can do it at the first meeting in May. We'll just have to advertise that it'll be done at the first meeting in May.
Okay.
Question.
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Anderson, on budget review, do you have any particular timetable for this meeting tomorrow?
As long as you want to meet.
I'm good till 3:30. I don't know about the rest. I've got a meeting at church at 4:00, so, but that's okay. Y'all can meet 9:00 or 10:00.
Oh, no.
No, we wouldn't do that, and you'd have to miss all that.
So Mr. Barrett was saying the same thing, so if we have a goal?
So it may be at 3:30 tomorrow, and if we need to come back, we could decide at that time when we'd need to come back to finish that up.
Just make sure you keep your calendar open, dear.
Well, if you have it before the date we know, then I'll be back. If not, after May 1.
Well, of course we will.
Well, we look forward to our meeting tomorrow. If there's nothing else for the April 22nd agenda, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Central office.
Adjourn.
All right.
Dr. Gilbert.